District One candidates, my name is Heather Way. I've been a affordable housing advocate in Austin for more than 20 years now and looking forward to moderating with the candidates today. So just a reminder for those, for the candidates and also those who are new, for, we're at the last forum, just a little bit about the structure for today. So each candidate is going to have a one-minute opening statement and we'll go ahead and start with Ms. Madison for that. And then, and then I'm going to ask two questions and each candidate again will have one minute, up to one minute for a response. And we have timekeeper there on the second row. And then we're going to open it up to the audience for questions. And if you can please keep your questions to no more than 20 seconds so we can just get through as many of the questions as possible. And each candidate again will have up to a minute to respond. And if you go over that, we will chop your heads off.
Oh, wait, wait.
So stick to your minute.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Natasha Harper-Madison and this is not a political speech because I am not a politician. What I am, however, is a very concerned native Austinite. I'm a mom. I'm a wife. I am a community advocate and I'm a cancer survivor. I want you to remember those things because they are all absolutely implicit with how I move from a political perspective. So I decided to run for Austin City Council after having served the city in multiple roles on various boards and commissions, including the Resource Management Commission where, by the way, I was literally the only black person I ever saw in the room. Chea, which is Community Housing Expansion of Austin, which deals in cooperative housing and that's going to come up again, so don't forget that. And then I'm a community advocate with my company, East Austin Advocates, where we help people to mitigate shortages of all the kinds. I realize that the way that I can best get to helping people afford to live in Austin is by way of shifting policy. Thank you for your time.
My name is Louis Conway Jr. I'm going to talk kind of fast, so I apologize. I work for, well, I'm a recovering criminal justice organizer. I worked for grassroots leadership. I led on a lot of the issues around affordable housing, paid sick days, juvenile, curfew, Fairchance Hiring as well. I am from Austin. I grew up in northeast Austin. My parents lost their home twice to property taxes trying to afford a home on a retiree's income. I also went to prison from northeast Austin. I went to prison in 1992. I got out in 2000. Got off parole in 2012. And what induced me to run is the issues I face, not having access to housing, not having access to healthcare, not having access to employment. And then I built my campaign on three pillars: compassion, equity, and inclusion, and making sure our policy kind of fits down that tunnel. And I will stop now because I don't think I have enough time.
Howdy, everybody. My name is Masao Ramos, Masao Ramos, if you can pronounce it in Spanish. I actually am a community organizer as well. I've been with the Rogers-Washington Holy Cross Neighborhood Association where I've chaired the Bylaws Committee as well as the Upper Boggy Creek Coalition, which is different neighborhoods on the east side. And I've also been on boards for the east side development, the BDC DC, BCD, and as well as getting preservation status for my neighborhood. I'm all about preserving the identity while moving forward in Austin and incentivizing developers that help out the community and also, also keep, keep our identities intact. We can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're joined by Vincent Harding. We have a one-minute for welcome statements. And you can pass the mic down. There's a mic there.
All right. Well, good afternoon. I want to thank you all for being here. My name is Vincent Harding. I'm running for Austin City Council because I love our community and believe I'm the most qualified person to help. I think we have some really significant challenges in District One: affordability, transportation, healthcare, criminal justice reform, education, and so much more. I believe my experience as an attorney, a real estate agent, someone that has worked at the Texas Legislature, the Houston City Hall, who's the former chair of the Travis County Democratic Party, and the former chair of the City's Board of Adjustment, allows me the ability to go in, build relationships, and maximize those experiences to get things done. And so my campaign theme is all hands on deck. I believe together we can build a coalition of a future Austin where people of all ages, races, and economic statuses. So I'm happy to be here with you today. Thank you so much.
And I'm going to start off with two questions. And with the first question, you'll each have a minute to respond. And we'll switch up the order for this. So this time we'll start with Mr. Conway and we'll go to the, we'll sort of go that direction, towards Ms. Ramos. So the first question is, what city policies and roles can the city play to prevent formal and informal evictions among low-income tenants? And this is one of the questions we asked on the questionnaire as well. So, Mr. Conway?
Right. And as I answered on the questionnaire, I believe we should seek ways to avoid tenant evictions at all costs and maybe there's a way for us to eliminate them. One of the other things I said is that employee-assisted housing should be one of the first things that we turn to, as well as figuring out a way for us to use 100 million land acquisition dollars as part of the bond money for us to put in some permanent affordable housing as well as my municipal jobs guarantee program. So in other words, before we evict someone, and most evictions are happening because they can't pay their bills, it's not because of the people, it's because of the cost. So we got to figure out a way to put those people to work at a higher rate and we also got to figure out a way for them to get more affordable housing.
Thanks, Ms. Ramos.
Do you mind repeating the question one more time?
No, not at all. What city policies and roles can the city play to prevent formal and informal evictions among low-income tenants?
I'd also do believe that we should look at not people's situation from a case-by-case, I guess, appointment. So we have people that are definitely, you know, aren't able to afford it. So what we need to do is start looking at possibly creating land trusts to create more affordable housing for low-income to no-income families. And also look at trying to just really establish a community for, for people that aren't able to afford housing right now as it is. There are definitely ways that we can work with different landlords so that we can mitigate evictions and I would like to explore those. Thank you.
Mr. Harding?
With the evictions, I think a couple ways. First is direct, the second is indirect. In a direct way, we can provide additional funds for emergency rental assistance. When people are in trouble, they're in a bind to be able to go somewhere and get help to take care of maybe one month's rent. And so I think that's very, very important. In an indirect way, Louis talked about it, job education, job training, helping people to get higher-paying jobs so that they can have more money to be able to afford the rents that exist. So I think we need to look at direct ways as well as indirect ways. And Masao mentioned land trust. That's when we're talking about having long-term affordability. We can help establish that in places 78721, 78724 that I think would be beneficial as we move forward.
I appreciate the question. So I started East Austin Advocates on the tail end of my cancer diagnosis. I decided that if I was going to potentially die, that I was going to do so in a way that I lived a life that was very purposeful. And so I started driving around at the housing development units that I had grown up in: Marshall, Mount Carmel, Rosewood Courts, Elm Ridge, et cetera, places where I lived in my formative experience. People lose their housing for vector issues. If you don't know what that means, that's roaches. Kids, I got four of them, and if you have any, they can be destructive. They break things. You can lose your housing because your kid broke your blinds or your drawers. So I would like to reverse engineer it. Affordability is why we're all here, right? That's inherently what it is that we need. But I think especially as it pertains to HACA properties where people are so frequently evicted, who have been dealing with chronic homelessness, we need to talk about how we make it so that the inspection process doesn't inherently displace people. I think that's a part of the problem and we need to address it immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the second question I have for you, also from the questionnaire, is how would you encourage large employers and private sector partners in Austin to contribute to the provision of affordable housing for their workers and the industry, industries serving them? Repeat that one more time and Ms. Masao, and we'll start with you and we'll go in that same order. Again, it's how would you encourage large employers and private sector partners in Austin to contribute to the provision of affordable housing for their workers and the industry, industries serving them?
I'm going to always say, let's reverse engineer this thing. We know what the problem is, right? And so when we start to prescribe solutions, one of the things we need to do is go back to why the problem exists in the first place. So not having access to opportunities to avoid the cost. Transportation is expensive. When people have to commute from far-flung areas of the town to get to their employment places, it costs too much and frequently it makes it so that they are either displaced from a housing perspective or lose their jobs. So we need to make it more an option for people to be able to remotely work. I think that's one of the biggest things that large employers can do. Make it so that people can telecommute, please. And by the way, with the soccer stadium coming in, with some of the mandated housing that's going to be onsite, I think all the Samsungs and all the Dells and all the, everybody else who has 10,000 square foot worth of concrete parking lots, I think we need to build housing onsite and/or build units that are in communities. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Oh, yeah. As I spoke about earlier, the employee-assisted housing, I think just like paid sick days is an incentive for folks to go to work. I think when an employer is able to offer help towards housing, that's another incentive to retain employees. But also, as I talked about, we need a municipal jobs program that allows the public sector of jobs. We talk about jobs being necessary, but we're not talking about how to create those jobs. And along with creating those jobs, we're creating housing solutions. And so what we've talked about, and you'll see on the questionnaire, is that that offers banks an opportunity to help employers, that offers community land trusts to be in place. But employers who are also a part of the tax structure in our neighborhoods, they can help contribute to housing as well. So employer-assisted housing, I think, along with permanently affordable housing, that, again, y'all got to vote for this bond, 250 million...
So I'll just finish this sentence for them. Yeah, vote for the bond, prop A, 250 million dollars. We definitely have to develop sustainable and perpetual affordability. I believe for different private sector jobs, we can create a fund for low-income housing so that we can essentially have low-income to no-income families apply for those fundings to get them out of tough breaks and to get them out of issues. I think we can also look at trying to incentivize affordable housing and build affordable housing for our teachers, for our police departments, for our firefighters, so that when they move to our communities, that they get a break in how much that they have to pay for rental or even for owning, and that they can just really ingratiate themselves within our community and help establish that equity. Thank you.
So I want to talk about it in terms of income and infrastructure. I talked about this earlier. Paying people more money will give them the ability to afford additional housing. The second piece is infrastructure, transportation assistance, the used mass transit, Capitol Metro bus passes, things of that nature will help to provide a level of affordability because as most people know, owning a car can cost people thousands of dollars through the maintenance and things of that nature. And then what the city can do is, we talked about the Affordable Housing Bond. We should be passing that and then we should be looking at a leverage. A seven-to-one leverage ratio on the last Affordable Housing Bond, if we have that same level of leverage this time, that would result in $2 billion. And so that would be a significant investment. We're going to need about $10 billion over the next 10 years, but this would be a good first step. I believe my experience helping to pass the largest affordable housing and transportation bonds on, while I was chair of the Democratic Party, will help us when it's time to build coalitions to get these widespread policies passed. Thank you.
Questions from the audience? Introduce yourself, too.
Oh, sure. My name is Kate Herman. And a couple of you mentioned community land trusts as a potential solution to address affordability. I know that there's, I think, one community land trust in Austin currently and it's been an innovative model that's helped out with affordability in a lot of other cities. So I was just curious if any of you could sort of elaborate on addressing some of the barriers that exist in Texas and in Austin politically and legally to expanding this model and why it isn't already happening?
We'll start with Mr. Harding. Oh, is he okay?
One of the biggest driver of cost is land. And so if you take a look at the city of Austin with the minimum lot sizes, we should be looking at ways to decrease that. And then also, when you take a look at land trusts, having the money, let's say, in 78724 to buy the land. And then after you buy the land, then you can sell houses on top of the land, essentially give people a 99-year ground lease. And so that will allow people to be able to build equity in the home, but then on the other hand, you don't necessarily gain the equity in the land. So in a way, you get a piece of, a piece of the wealth building through homeownership, but you don't get the entire piece because you're not owning the land. So that would be some of the barriers, just the financial piece. And then second, the educational piece for people to understand exactly, okay, what am I buying? What's the differences in these?
Ms. Masao?
I appreciate Mr. Harding for sort of giving you guys some background about, you know, from an infrastructural perspective, how it works. But to answer your question about impediments, it's money and it's altruism. To get people to understand that what we have to do is understand that even if it doesn't necessarily affect you personally, there are people in our community who cannot afford to live here. Bo McCarver over at the Black Land Community Development Corporation, he says, and it's fantastic because they've been buying property on the east side for 35 years, he says, honey, the dirt is expensive. And so what they're talking about as an option, as an alternative to buying the expensive dirt in central east Austin is moving people further out, which continues to add to the sprawl issue. So that to say, it's about money and it's about getting people for whom it doesn't affect them to understand that our diverse communities, both racially diverse and economically diverse, create this beautiful tapestry that is the city of Austin. So we have to shift our culture. So community land trusts are an option as, you know, a device, as a tool, but we have to shift our culture.
So I'm not going to break down the mechanics. I'll tell you what I did. So I looked around the nation. Massachusetts created a Community Preservation Act and they went to the state and they treated their communities just like we treat wildernesses, right? Where we protect our wildernesses from environment and from valuation. Well, we should treat our communities the same way. We go to the state ledge, and I'm the only one that's got experience actually moving a piece of legislation. We go to the state ledge, we look for a Mutual Housing Fund Act which affects the whole state, which allows every city to implement these housing trusts. It's not just a community land trust. We need a mutual housing fund that allows to track other streams of money that will offset that financial issue. And going into it, the reason why community land trust a year and a half ago, when I launched my campaign, Kate, right? The reason why I started talking about this is because I looked at a way to stop gentrification. They were specifically created to stop gentrification back in 1981 in Cleveland.
Yeah. So one of the main issues that everyone has touched on is definitely financial. The dirt is expensive here in Austin and it's getting more expensive by the day. We also, we also have an issue with building permits. There's an issue with trying to add add-ons and alley flats to, to houses to make them more affordable. And if we can actually create a streamlined process for some of these issues, it'll be easier for people that are, let's say, if they're not able to make their mortgage and they want to add an alley flat, they can add an alley flat and then have someone else come in and rent it out and they can eventually, you know, keep their home sustainable for themselves. We also have to look at just trying to really look at different pieces of land in Austin that we can, whether it's on the outskirts or in our urban core, that we can develop without pushing out people. I think that's one of the biggest issues that we're facing today in Austin.
Questions? Yep, here's one. You can introduce yourselves. And this time, we will start with Ms. Ramos and we'll go same order as we went.
Hi, my name is Darrell Smith and I'm in District, not District One, but my main concern for Austin is to get the coal power plant closed as soon as possible. And I would like to know if you were elected the city council member for District One, what is your intention for the Decker Lake Power Plant in that district?
For the Decker Lake Power Plant, I would, I would plan to close it down, but we would also have to look at trying to shift those jobs into, I guess, different type of working jobs, just because some of the people that have been working in the plant, that's all they know. So I would definitely set up, I guess, a teaching, teaching sessions to help with other jobs as well as possible municipal jobs here in, in Austin that we can offer from the city that will also help people remain in the city with a job if we close down the power plant.
Great. We'll go, oh, yeah, we'll go that order.
Okay, Darrell. Poder has great rules we should follow, Susana Almanza, as well as Tejas, right? But to answer your question specifically, one of the first things I came up with at the lake is a floating solar power plant, right? And part of my municipal jobs program, which is a public sector job program, we want to use that lake out there to generate enough megawatts to power 150 homes. Right now, the return on our investment on that power plant out there is horrible when you look at solar power plants converting into electricity and the water hydroelectric plants, right? So what we want to do is put folks to work out there using solar power plants because you have to maintain those and you also have to convert that solar power to electricity. So when I talked to the electricians, they were all forward because, again, it keeps them working, but it drops the overall utility cost for folks in District One.
So I'm going to steal one of your lines, Mr. Conway Jr. It's about people power. So what we need to do, I mean, and this is the bottom line, I'm going to always say, let's reverse engineer this thing and look at the problem from the base of it. The base of it is, when we shut down the Holly Power Plant, when we shut down the paper manufacturing organizations, that required people, it required their effort, it required their time. I literally was the only black person I ever saw at the Resource Management Commission, y'all. Like, they are talking about utilities, they're talking about solar for low-income housing. They're talking about things that are so essential to our existence in the city of Austin from a utility perspective. And, I mean, I was the only black person in the room and I'm talking from a citizen testimony perspective. I literally only ever saw one person. Nobody goes to the Resource Management Commission to do citizen testimony. Our start is going to be that we have to realize that if we want to go clean, if we want to go green, we got to get involved. We have to encourage people to get involved, period. Thank you.
Yes. I would pledge to close the power plant. I think we need to be moving as a city more to cleaner types of energy. For private individuals, I think Austin Energy should continue to incentivize people to go get cleaner sources of energy, whether it be solar or things of that nature. And then lastly, I think from affordability standpoint, utility costs can be one of the biggest drivers of unaffordability. So going back to older homes that we can go in and provide sources of energy efficiencies, the types of things that I want to do more of in District One.
So I've heard talked about like cultural shift and encouragement to like citizens. So what would you guys do to involve people in that decision-making process? Like, because it's really hard, because unless something happens, people don't feel engaged. I'm like nervous. I'm not normally like in front of people, but yeah, so that's a question.
Okay, let's start with Mr. Conway. We start with you recently? Okay.
Absolutely. Stakeholder process. That is the only way for us to take a resolution and pass it to an ordinance with the juvenile curfew, with the Freedom Cities resolutions, with the paid sick days. The more we involve the community, as a matter of fact, one of the first things I created was a people's assembly. And the reason why we created the people's assembly was for that reason, was so you could be involved and you could be a leverage point against me once I'm elected. So you hold me accountable. And we create an assembly of stakeholders. Stakeholders are folks who are directly impacted by the policies and directly impacted by the issues. If I'm not listening to you as the expert, what am I doing, right? As a community organizer, the way I solve problems is by listening to the experts. And the experts are the people who are directly impacted by that issue. So what we've done over the past year with Fairchance Hiring is that we've encouraged the city to involve the stakeholders who were involved in taking that resolution to an ordinance. It's the only way we can do it.
First things first, I brought my voter registration card. So if you're not registered to vote and/or need to change your address, I got my sticker, I'll slap it on, I'm a VDR, I'll get you registered today. And that's going to, I'm going to lead that right into the next part, civic engagement. It is not encouraged and as a matter of fact, it's virtually impenetrable. It's convoluted and complicated by design. When they say low-information voter, they're probably talking about you because they count on you, the ubiquitous "they" count on you to not participate. You know what? Don't listen. Get involved, get engaged. I think we as a city have to take responsibility for instilling civic engagement programs at the junior high school and high school level. I think that's our start. And then move people who are generally typically underrepresented into areas where they can become highly informed voters. The process is intimidating because it is confusing. I'm going to leave you with this, the Railroad Commission ain't got nothing to do with trains.
Mr. Harding?
I got a chance to listen to Attorney General Eric Holder and he said, there's nothing as powerful as involve citizens. And so the foundation of my campaign is all hands on deck. I really believe that we get better outcomes when more people are engaged. That's why when I was chair of the Travis County Democratic Party, I held multiple community conversations on race, on policing, on immigration, on poverty, on economic empowerment, and more. And so I believe it's important to bring policymakers to the community and then hand the microphone to the community to get direct answers from their policymakers. Number three, we had door-to-door knocking, highest voter registration we've ever seen and the most people voted in this last election than any other election. And then number four, going to where you are. So showing up at the door, showing up at community events and saying, this is what's going on. I believe it's that type of level of engagement that will help us have more people get involved, which will result in better outcomes for our community.
So for me, it's all about education, education, education. Getting people educated on different policies and different issues that are going, that they will be voting on is going to empower them. The way that we do that is either you can set up a comprehensive website that they can go up, that says each issue that's staken out for their specific district, for their specific community, and you can set up times and town halls so that they can come and get engaged with, with us and speak to community leaders and organizers. I will also echo that door-to-door knocking, that's one of the things that for historical preservation that we did in my neighborhood, we had to get at least 51% of the neighborhood included in it. And what we did was create different meetings so that everyone could attend, attend a meeting and then eventually go door-to-door, talk about the issues, get a petition, and really just hammer it home that this is one of the things that's important to them that we should be looking at.
Okay. My question is about the same as I asked the mayor's. What about absentee landlords of affordable housing?
We'll start with Ms. Masao.
So this question is fantastic and for no other reason. I touched on it earlier in terms of HACA properties, but not everybody that we're talking about is on a HACA property and under the same level of inspection. So the inspection by way of the residence extends to the property with HACA. Outside of that, private residential owners are able to basically virtually do what they want. Now, while I don't approve of a blanket residential registration program, I do believe we need to have a registration program of sorts that holds private landlords accountable. I also believe we need to have a better system for being able to report when your landlord isn't upholding their end of the bargain to provide you a home that's safe, that's functional, and that's healthy for you. And so that to say, lastly, I would say we need to encourage and propel organizations like the Austin Tenants Council that helps to preserve the rights of tenants and, and that. That helps to preserve the rights of tenants and hold landlords accountable. It's a, it's a problem and we need to address it immediately.
Well, I'll echo what Natasha just said about the Tenants Council. I think we need to absolutely empower the Tenants Council. Number two, I think we need to empower tenants. If we have a landlord that is not following our ordinances and things are not safe, we need to be able to give them the ability to make complaints and then make sure that they're not being retaliated against. If a landlord is a repeat offender, they should be required to register their property at that point. If a landlord is a repeat offender, they should be required to register their property at that point. Because at that point, there's no more excuses, you should know better. At that point, you've already been complained about and things of that nature. And so those would be the things, the Tenants Council and then the individual ability to make complaints, be free from retaliation, so that if someone is being retaliated against, we provide some sort of financial assistance to help them while being retaliated against. And then number three, the mandated registration.
Mr. Ramos?
So I think we need a more stringent regulation to ensure that landlords are being held accountable. If they're getting tax breaks for affordable housing and that housing isn't affordable, then I think that there should be fines that are leveraged against them. I also believe that repeat offenders should also pay fines as well. I think that we need to set up more anonymity for tenant complaints so that when tenants have issues that they don't feel that they may get evicted or kicked out, it has to come from the ground up so that we know exactly what's going on. And by that is by empowering the tenants so that they can feel comfortable whenever they're in, having a problem or an issue with a landlord.
Sister Shirley, I feel like the folks who own the homes in my neighborhood don't live in those homes, right? And so oftentimes, I'm having to deal with tenants that they may have not been very stringent about screening. And so are we going to hold the homeowner accountable for the screening process? Obviously. But what concerns me about the coding and the zoning is that I'm also dealing with folks in Craigwood who are being fined out of their home because they can't keep up their home improvements, because they're having a hard time paying their property taxes. But now they're being fined out of their homes because we are putting in regulatory measures that are affecting people blanket-wise. So I think we have to be very cognizant when we talk about mandating anything and who it affects. And not everyone is able to pay those fines.
Good afternoon. My name is Shashana Krieger. I work with a tenants' rights organizing project, BOSTA. And my question relates to the responses, actually, of the prior two questions, both regarding civic engagement and also how to empower tenants. And one thing we've been experiencing lately is that we are getting criminal trespass notices when we're out on properties knocking on doors. We're talking about knocking on doors as being important to civic engagement. But in a lot of multifamily properties in Austin, political candidates and campaigns can't knock on doors, which means that the vast majority of low-income folks in Austin are not, were not able to engage them. And tenant organizers can't, because the management will just call APD, and then APD will come in and kick us off the property. So my question to y'all is, should there be a right to organize? That canvassers should be able to be on property, to engage people, to have conversations about politics, conversations about their tenant rights? And in addition to that, should the Austin Police Department be engaged in working with management to try to quash the ability of tenants to speak for themselves?
I'm so hyped for you. Please let me go first.
Yes, 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 and more yes. So I got, as a VDR, I got a message from Matt Flores at the Travis County Elections Office yesterday, which we scored a victory, y'all. There are 14 different properties that just said, "VDRs can go to multifamily and register people." But you know how we scored that victory? Persistence. Asking, begging, pleading with management companies. The people who reside on your property need to know what's happening and need to have the opportunity to engage from a civic's perspective. You do not need to live in a single-family home in order to engage in this process. If we can, from a Resource Management Commission, or perspective, if we can mandate that all multifamily has to compost, then for God's sake, please let us get civic with it. So yes, absolutely, work with APD to say, hey, can you kind of ease up on the this? Until we get, because it's going to be incremental, it's not going to go fast. And the fact of the matter is, I personally will volunteer to call every complex in the city to get that passed. Yes.
Okay, we're going to go this order now, Mr. Conway.
Absolutely. So as a community organizer, right, I'm engaged with making sure that folks are part of the process. So again, a year ago, we created the People's Assembly for that purpose. One of the first things that I did as a campaign was launch a voter registration campaign at Gibbons Park. And one of the reasons why we did that was because we wanted to make sure that people who were least engaged in the process, that we made the most effort to engage them. The People's Assembly was specifically designed to bring folks just like you into a room to create a legislative force, a legislative lever against the elected officials. That way, you are able to organize amongst yourself, regardless of where you live, and use your organizational skills with your people who are directly impacted by the issue and take that lever and knock that person out of the office, right? So if they're not involving you in the process, if they're not involving anybody, if we're not involved, am I stopping? No, if we're not involved, y'all, sorry. Shashana, so if you're not involved in the process, if we're not making sure the stakeholders are the first
Finish your sentence, thanks.
If the stakeholders are not involved, then we have to make every effort as elected officials to give you autonomy.
I'm going to echo their sentiments, especially when it comes to this being an incremental thing. I think we can definitely work with APD to at least slow things down. If not, maybe even say, hey, we're going to, would it be possible to get a permit to have a block party in this area so that we can get all the people that are in the residence to come out to the centralized location and then speak our message? We definitely have to get people engaged in the process, and I think all of the ideas that were just laid out are perfect.
I absolutely think we need civic engagement and to empower citizens. I think as a practical matter, the first thing that I think of is maybe the county clerk, working to develop a level of standards amongst candidates. And that if every candidate in all the races say, hey, I'm going to do A, B, C, D, then maybe we can take that promise to different multifamily complexes that do not allow us to go in right now and say, hey, all these candidates have agreed to operate in a certain way. Therefore, is it okay if they call ahead and schedule? And then that way, we use the power of togetherness to say, we want to make sure that we engage your residents, and this is how we want to do it, as well as when it comes to tenants.
The landlord will never want tenant organizers on the property.
We have time for one more question. Are there any new questions? Anyone who hasn't had a chance to ask a question yet? Shirley has her wrap-up question?
Okay. Last question.
I can come up with it.
Okay, great.
It's okay.
Okay, I'm Shirley Crossland, and I live in a seniors' affordable housing complex. And I don't know, maybe the woman from BOSTA can help me with this, because I can't remember the exact term. But the complex next door to us had a water collection runoff pit, and the water was in there a year round. And so BOSTA helped us turn that into the city to be investigated. And it took, I don't know, it felt like six months. It may have only been three, but it took an excessive amount of time to get the investigation, to get the results, and for the other property owner to do something about it. It finally got fixed, but I think it took, I don't know, nine months or a year. It felt that long, anyway.
Questions or just comment?
So will you speed up that process somehow? I don't know, maybe it needs more employees. I don't know.
I was actually about to
Mr. Harding, oh, okay, Mr. Ramos and then Mr. Harding.
Okay, I was actually about to comment on that. Usually that process is slowed down because there's not enough employment. I would definitely push for more employees so that they can do different investigating, different environmental issues. We have watershed issues like Little Walnut Creek, there's a ton of flooding. And we still have to get environmental investigations done there. And so I believe that once we employ people to really give us a master plan, then we can attack the issues.
Mr. Harding?
I agree with myself. I think additional resources will definitely be needed. I would also say, just this comment, I've knocked on some doors, and the complaint I've received is people say the city of Austin is complaint-driven. And what I mean by that is you have two people complain, no one's going to do anything. But if you have 20 people complain, you will get a response faster. And so to me, it should not take that. And so from a city, we must do a better job of responding to the concerns of the community. And so my focus will be working with the city manager and saying, look, we have to have better response times. You hear this not only in this area, but also through the permitting process. You also hear this through when it comes to criminal justice, when people file a complaint and that they don't know what happens at the police monitor's office. So there's so many different ways that I think we can do a better job of responding to the concerns of the community.
I'll echo some of my political friends up here, and then I'll add to that that we absolutely have to address our land use code. I think inherently with doing so, we are going to increase access to departments in the city that address these sorts of complaints. I also think it shouldn't require 20 people complaining. I think when you call your councilperson, you should be able to say, good afternoon, Councilwoman Madison, I have a problem. There are 1,000 mosquitoes on my front porch right now because there's water collecting next door to me. I think your councilperson should be the person with whom they penetrate every possible angle of city council and the city manager's office to make certain that your issue is addressed. I think that is the primary issue here. Constituent services need to be made, number one priority, by the councilperson.
Actually,
Shirley, sorry.
I started investigating how to do it, but I saw the outgoing councilwoman
I think she's about to cut you off. I'm going to talk to you out in the lobby, because for no other reason, I like to fight. I'll help you fight.
Thank you, Shirley. Sorry, we're also a little, running a little late for our next candidate. So thank you, sorry to cut you off, Shirley. Mr. Conway?
Sister Shirley, I love that question. Environmental justice is one of the things that we felt like was important for vulnerable communities. And I feel like senior citizens and retired citizens obviously are vulnerable communities. And that was my issue with Code Next, and that's why I never had a position on Code Next, is because Code Next did not address those issues. But let's do address the issue of staffing. As you've heard me say over and over, a municipal jobs guarantee program that offers public sector jobs, and how do we pay for it, right? Is we were going to give the officers $82.5 million to fund 1,600 officers for overtime and time off, right? We take that same money and we can afford to give 3,500 people a job at $23,000 a year. Included with our district care program, that's going to raise their possibility to make $55,000 a year, right? Go to my website, conwayfratex.com, I've laid it all out for you. So when we talk about jobs and we talk about creating resources, the resource is already there.
Mr. Ramos? Oh, no, we started. We're going down.
I'll keep talking, though.
Everyone's gone. My gosh, it's that late. We need some coffee in the room. Let's give a round of applause to our candidates. And thanks, everyone, for your questions and for being here for this session.